All right, Drew, we're back on the air? Yes, thank you. I'll accept a motion to command a non-public.
So movements chairman?
Roll call.
I Chad Franz.
I Jim Butler.
I Joe Green.
I Deb Paul.
I John Farrell. Folks, we're out of non-public. Going to move, before I move into public comment, I want to handle Resolution 2022-04. This is a resolution relative to the position of town manager. Today is the first reading and the only reading. Effective February 8th, 2022, the council appointed Michael Malaguti to the role of acting town manager pursuant with Article 4, Section 4.5 of the Town Charter. Whereas acting town manager Malaguti has the requisite education, training, and qualifications for the role of town manager, and has proven his ability to perform the role of town manager, whereas pursuant with Article 4 of the Charter, the council wishes to appoint the town manager who will act as the chief administrative officer for the town and serve at the pleasure of the town council. The council recognizes that Article 4, Section 4.2 of the Charter allows, with the approval of four members of the town council and town manager, need not be a resident of the town. Therefore, let it, therefore, be it resolved by the town, Lundary Town Council pursuant to Article 4 of the Town Charter, Michael Malaguti is hereby appointed as the town manager for the town of Lundary. Such appointment become effective today, April 11th, 2022, and the council has voted to suspend the residency requirement for the appointee. With regards to the appointee, he comes to us after several years in private practice. Also, as four, he's been with us for four years, three as our prosecutor, one as our assistant solicitor. He and his wife Catherine live in Pelham, so they do live nearby, and considering today's real estate market, that's why we're waiving the residency requirement. We look forward to moving forward with you, and I would accept a motion for approval.
So movements chairman?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call.
I Chad Franz.
I Jim Butler.
I Joe Green.
I Deb Paul.
I John Farrell. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the council, to yourself and members of the council for their confidence, and I'm looking forward to working tirelessly for the people of Lundary. Thanks again.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now moving into public comment. I have a couple of things here on my agenda. I have a leash law discussion with town clerk Sherri Farrell.
Sherri Farrell, your town clerk, and I just wanted to, first of all, thank everyone. We had our rabies clinic on Saturday from 10 until 1:00, and it was, it was a huge success. We had about 60 residents come out, dogs, cats, and not only were they able to get their vaccination, thanks to Dr. Gregorio Animal Veterinary Clinic, but also, we set it up so that everything was held here, so that they could also register their dog. So we were able to actually register about 30 dogs, and some of them I don't think would have been registered, except we were able to catch them and tell them how easy the process was. So, um, thank you to everyone. Deb, you got it in the paper for us, which we appreciate. It was in all, you know, the local newspapers, police department, fire department, everyone was helping us to spread the word, and it made a difference. We also were able to donate $1,100 to, to our survivor, Survivor's Paws, it's called. It's a nonprofit where they rescue and help pets in need, and they came down from Vermont and Lebanon to assist us and really made a difference, too. So, we're looking forward to our third annual one next year. And, and kind of going along with that topic, what I'm asking the council tonight is, if you could consider looking at ordinance 2016-02, it doesn't have to be tonight, but if it's something you could put on your radar, Dave Carver, myself, and Christine Gentey in my office, Dave Carver is our animal control officer, and he's been phenomenal, and it's made such a difference having him working side by side with us. But what we're seeing way too much of is, we have, we have an animal control ordinance, but we don't have a leash law, and I'm not sure that's where we want to head with a leash law. But the problem is, the way the ordinance is written and was amended in 16, is it states that the dog has to be under control of the owner, and in only certain places, like our rail trail, and, and also our Kent Allen Forest, is a dog, does a dog actually have to be on a leash? But in all other areas, the owner has to keep their dog under control, but that's very vague. And what we've been seeing is, and it's scary, we had one situation where one dog killed another dog, and the pictures that were sent to my phone were horrific. And, you know, of course, they do get, you know, violation notices and all, but we've had residents scratched, we've had seniors knocked down, and we need to look at this and evaluate it, and I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think together we can come up with something. Our residents have to be able to walk in their neighborhoods and not be fearful of a dog running even out of the dog's own yard, and that's been a constant the last few months. And I know the police department's had a lot of different cases and have been called out, so I think it's something we do need to look at. So, when you have an opportunity, or maybe together, because it's gotten really scary, and it's one case after another, and again, Dave, myself, we have pictures, horrific pictures of what's happening in our own town, and I think we really need to take control of it and, and decide how we can help our residents with that. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chair. No, you can go first. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming up and sharing. So, just so I can understand, and Mr. Chair, if you could help as well, so the process of, say, changing something, like, what would be the process of that, and what are you proposing that we change specifically?
I could speak, I could speak to the process of adopting or revising an ordinance that entails, per the Charter, and we actually have an ordinance that talks about how we create ordinances. And the requirement is that there be a first reading, newspaper publication, a second reading slash public hearing, and then the matter can be adopted at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sherri, is it possible to get this documentation, like, to see how many, I mean, I do the police logs and read them all the time, and I don't see that, that many, I see a few. I just, I just was kind of curious as to how many, where they were, were they in I just, it just was kind of curious as to how many, where they were, were they in public places, or where it's like an odd thing where, you know, somebody forgot to put the battery in the, you know, the child, the zap caller wasn't in, and they saw squirrel run across the road, they ran across the road, they saw the person on a bike, went after the person on a bike, because the dogs all hepped up. Like, I mean, I'd like to kind of see what we're actually looking at.
And Deb, that's a good point, because I don't think that we want to go to a leash law where every dog is required to be on leash, because we all know that dog that is in such control, and that wouldn't be fair. And you're absolutely right, it's sometimes the cute puppies, you know, the Goldens that are just kind of, they see a mom in a baby carriage, and they dash down onto the sidewalk, and, you know, they're trying to be friendly, but that mom with a baby doesn't want the dog jumping up on them. So the truth is somewhere in the middle with it, and that's why I'm not sure what I'm asking for. What I, I think we could start with is just bringing awareness to the public. And, you know, if everyone works together and, you know, and really recognize that because you love your dog, like, we love Gigi. But not everybody loves Gigi, and not everyone loves Gigi sniffing at them, or, you know, or jumping up on them.
Well, this goes back to, to, there is no secure place in our town for dogs to run, back to the dog park. Now, that would have been a great spot on Gilchrist Road for a dog park, a water park, ice skating park, and a pickleball court. All putting a nice thing with trails through it, but, c'est la vie. My point is, if we, you know, go down this park, should we revisit an actual dog park? I mean, at what point is Hudson and, and Derry going to say, you know what? Have to be a resident to get in.
Right.
And we have no place, I mean, some people do have a lot of yard, and some people don't. But you want to have that interaction with other dogs, and, you know, my dog goes off lead all the time in my backyard, and he's, they're pretty under control until that crazy bunny rabbit decides to run across the yard, and they go, oh, you know, there goes Swifty, and they want to chase it. And so, I don't know, I just think that maybe that could be part of it, I mean, the reason they're off lead is to make them burn off energy.
Right.
I don't live in a neighborhood, I can't walk on the sidewalk or take my life in my hand, because I don't have a sidewalk, it's a busy road, so not having that, I mean, I do go to Derry and Hudson, so I think that this all kind of goes together, so if it's an incumbent thing of.
Yeah, and maybe that's how we need to look at it, too. Because we don't want to become too firm with it, but, but Mike, we've talked about this, we've had many meetings trying to, like, solve this, where do we go with it? So, again, if we can bring awareness to the public and everyone can work together and just kind of keep that in mind again, that, you know, because we love dogs doesn't mean that everyone does. And, you know, and we can, you know, move forward with it too down the road. Something else I'd like you to consider, and this is a big one, too. But one problem that we continually have when we're trying to get messages out to the public, and some people, you know, we have our newspapers, we have our social media, and then we kind of have everything in between. But what I'd love to see somewhere down the road, and it might be through raising money or donations, but I think it's phenomenal what our high school students donated to the school, and we have that beautiful electronic message board out front at the high school. And someday I would love to see one, like, in front of our police station, or kind of as you're coming in, an electronic message board where we can remotely from home with our phones, put messages about what's going on at the library, police events, rabies clinics, but something that the people can see and really read, and we are so grateful that when you wheel that, you know, that sign out and you change it for us constantly, whenever I ask. Patrick, for a while there was putting up little verbs, you know, little kind of fun rhymes a few years back, and that's wonderful, but so many of our residents coming through, even just on Saturday, we're seeing it's kind of hard to read, and then you can only put one message, and I think it's like three words, you know, three lines. But down the road, if we could ever afford a message board, you know, to represent this part of the town and the town side of things, then you've got the school, you've got the town, they could match, I've actually looked into it, the three companies locally that we could talk to about it. And maybe there's that company out there that would even donate it, I, you know, I know it's a lot of money we're talking about, but I think it would really serve the residents well. So that was kind of my, my other little thing, even if it's on a two-year plan, a three-year, whatever it would take. But, but yes, so that, I think that's pretty much all I had, a big thank you, and thank you for all your support to the town clerk and tax collector's office, we couldn't do it without all of you. Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just move to a point of order before I, before I move any further with public comment. I'd also like to request a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public session indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sure, it's affirmative, seal the minutes. Okay, we're still in public comment, ladies and gentlemen, I have the National Telecommunications Week proclamation. Who, who has the proclamations? They're going around for signature, they're over there? We have Deputy Chief Heinrich and, and Captain Cheatham. Did you want the proclamations, gentlemen?
She has a copy.
Or do you want?
I wasn't sure if you were going to read it, sir, or?
I would be, I'm happy to read them, or I'm happy to let you read them, how would you like to proceed?
If I may just say maybe thirty seconds worth of words, and I allow you and, or someone from the council to read the proclamation.
Sounds great.
Great, ladies and gentlemen at home, my name is Patrick Cheatham, I'm a police officer captain here at the Londonderry Police Department, I'm joined by Deputy Fire Chief Fred Heinrich, and this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And while a police officer or firefighter might be the first man or woman you see after you call nine-one-one, it's police and fire dispatchers who are the first voices you hear when you need help with our situation at your home. So this week, we honor and recognize all of our civilian members of our staff, especially our telecommunications operators, and I was just going to read, we actually only have six police dispatchers in Londonderry, and we're set to swear a new dispatcher in a week from today. Gillian Leclair hails from the town of Londonderry, twenty-six years old, and is looking to start her public safety career as a dispatcher, and remain in the town in which she was raised and which she loves so much. So special thanks to our dispatcher Sophie Bartlett, Christine Jack, Megan Moran, Amelia McKeever, Maria Shakt, and also our dispatch supervisor Corey Nader.
Perfect, thank you, and to add to that, with us, we have dispatcher Brittany Hesson, Matt Nelson, Victoria Thickens, Cindy Tuck, and our part-time dispatcher Bruce Halliwell Jr.
Well, gentlemen, I can tell you anytime that I've interacted with dispatch in both departments and everything, it's always been professional and excellent experience, so it's much appreciated.
Well, thank you.
Turn to Council Green to read the proclamation.
Okay, in honor of National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, April tenth through sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two, whereas the public safety dispatchers of the town of Londonderry, who process an average of a hundred thousand telephone calls per year, are the first critical contact that our citizens have with Londonderry's emergency services, and whereas these dispatchers are the vital link to those calling for help and to firefighters, paramedics, and police officers. And whereas dispatchers monitor emergency personnel activities by radio and telephone and provide them with lifesaving information to ensure their safety. And whereas the safety of our firefighters, paramedics, and police officers are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by all public safety dispatchers from the citizens who call the Londonderry Fire and Police Department. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Londonderry Fire and Police Department have contributed significantly to the suppression of fire treatment of patients and the apprehension of criminals in life-threatening situations. And whereas each dispatcher, the unseen individual providing a calm voice when emergencies arise, has exhibited compassion, empathy, and professionalism, keeping our town and citizens safe. Therefore, on the occasion of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April tenth, April tenth to sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Londonderry Town Council urges all citizens to honor the employees of the Londonderry Fire and Police Communication Center and recognize them for their diligence and professionalism in helping to keep our town, its citizens, employees, and visitors safe. Sign this eleventh day of April, two thousand twenty-two, at the town of Londonderry, New Hampshire, and the witness thereof, the seal, the signature of the town council.
And it's town, town, town of Londonderry and its town council.
Thank you, sir. And gentlemen, we have one for each of you.
Great, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you very much for taking just a few minutes to recognize people that are critical to our public safety mission and who are often unrecognized because they are a faceless voice on the other side of a telephone, or a police radio, or a fire radio. But without them, we would not be able to serve our community in the way that we do. So gentlemen and Madam Counselor, thank you very much, and Mr. Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And please thank the people for us personally.
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comments, so if there's anyone who would like to address the council.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to address.
Okay.
I'll look, if that's okay.
Please go ahead.
So, yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about something that I've been working on with Steve Hamilton and Mike Malaguti, and it's of quite, quite a big concern of mine. It looks like we have a current income limit for elderly exemption. I know we're going to be talking a few things tonight about tax credits, et cetera, but I wanted to bring to the council's attention that the limits that we have currently in our brackets for a single person, a single elderly person making forty thousand eight hundred, and then as a married person making fifty thousand three hundred, I think are too low, I mean, I mean, are too high. And I think we have to try to look at where we can bring this into consideration and have people that are, you know, not making, or making too much money. If they're making forty-six or forty-seven or forty-eight thousand, you know, these, these, these limits, I'm not really sure how we come up with these limits, and I thought it would be a good idea to kind of have that discussion and really dig into it, because, you know, as things, as, as prices continue to increase past COVID, I think these numbers are a little bit low, and we should raise those limits, and I just wanted to kind of put that out there. The other thing I wanted to point out is that on occasions, you, you would have people that are, that have pensions and that are getting two incomes even after somebody should, should pass away. And we have the designation simply of single and married. And in reality, if they're having two, two incomes coming in, I think this should be considered for that married level. Whereas right now, we just consider them as single. They've, they haven't been divorced, they have, you know, their spouse passed away. And because they have a second check coming in, it takes them out of that exemption qualification, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, well, we can, we can certainly, you know, revisit those.
So Mike, I just didn't know if you, you know, if you could continue to maybe talk about this with Steve, and I know follow up with him, if you could, because I've been speaking to my, individually as a council, but I wanted to bring this, as we normally do. Some of us go back and forth with our constituents, and we bring things to, to the town that are of concern, and I wanted to make sure I brought it up in public, what I've, what I've been working on.
It's an important issue, Mr. Vice Chairman, and I will have those discussions with Mr. Hamilton and continue to work through those issues with him.
And whatever, whatever, whatever information you need in cooperation, if the council would allow, I would love to be able to head that up with you.
Fantastic.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, please, all right. Good? Everybody up here good?
Yep.
Public comment. Who are you again, fella?
Dan Bouchard, O'Connell Drive, Londonderry. I just want to touch base on what Sherri just talked about with the dogs. My wife, she walks our dog, she has a husky. It's blind, and, you know, every so often you run into other dogs. And she's had comments of, and it's, again, it's education, of people that move into town and say, I moved to New Hampshire, I'm going to let my dog run loose, you know? I don't know, I registered my dogs, maybe one way is to give them at time of registering the dog, a copy of the law, all right, on how to hang on to the, you know, restrain your dog. My other comment would be, last week when you guys talked about landscaping out here. One thought I think the council might want to look at is, instead of putting grass and investing in sprinkler system and, you know, maybe throw bark mulch, grade it, put bark mulch, I mean, I've been in the business for, for years, and you know, if you put some bark mulch out there, or maybe some stone out there, put some picnic tables out there for our employees, the library people maybe could use it. Just a thought, okay?
I think we're certainly open to options, none have been presented to us yet, I, so it's a good time to bring up options.
Right, that's why I wanted to bring it up, I know last week you guys were discussing it. My other thought, and now that Mike is, you know, official town manager. When I was watching the planning board meeting the other day, and Deb was on there, and we had the update on Woodmont.
Yep.
Okay?
I was watching it too.
Yep, and I guess what alarms me is, I'm, I'm watching this, and I hear the lot of residential development going to be coming in at Woodmont, more than I think the, the town was expecting. Also, we have a hundred and seventy townhouses coming up on twenty-eight. I guess my biggest concern is, I lived through the time here in Londonderry where we had an influx of kids into the school system, a lot of kids in the school system. I'm afraid that we're going to end up in that situation again. So I hope somebody is keeping an eye on what's going on.
So the development agreement that was filed with their deed also allows for the ability, not that I'm looking to build schools, but the ability for a school to be built in that area, and for them to be able, for us to be able to acquire land at some discounted price from market price, whatever it is at the time. So that was included. It also does come into the overall formula as well. So while, you know, I watched the same thing, I had a discussion with Attorney Pollock. Sadly, you know, things have changed. And retailers are not coming back the way that everyone thought they were going to come back.
Well, you know.
But we are, but we are, getting a lot more inquiries about that land from a lot more industrial, commercial type of uses. So I wouldn't jump to the residential so fast yet, because we're getting, by, maybe, you know, by accident, we wound up with all the distribution centers, well, that wound up being a good thing. And we're, because of where we sit, we have others talking to us. Nobody the size of the one that just pulled out of Amazon, out of Hudson with Amazon.
Well, I mean, I look at.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I look on Gilchrist Road, I mean, that's a, a big cluster development. And now, north of Pillsbury, where at one time the town was going to try to buy it, but then Mac sold it to Woodmont.
Right.
That's going to be more residential.
And as part of their master plan, that was always residential.
Right, you know, and when I listened to the planning, you know, to the presentation, it was like, well, you know, residential seems to be more appealing right now, because, you know, businesses.
The market, right?
Well, I look at the market, but my, my comment on, John, is, I go to Tuscan Village, and they're filling up businesses left and right down there.
So interestingly, I was there the other day, and they're, from a retail standpoint, and, you know, and in the discussions we've had behind the scenes, is they're struggling as well from a retail standpoint. They're getting for that building that is closest to the original entrance of Rockingham Park, so the one that is further south, they're getting thirty-five hundred dollars a month for rent. I mean, that's what it's starting at. So with those kind of crazy prices, that's, you know how this works, you're a developer, that's what, that's, that's what drives the market. Now, you know, like I said, the good news is, is we're under NDA for other things that we can't talk about, but that, you know, we're seeing some of the same types of things, but not as much of the retail, I mean, retailers are digitizing and, and doing more business virtually than they are doing, as you watch the malls empty out.
Well, I mean.
Now, what we're hoping for is, is that the restaurants bounce back. And if they bounce back, then the retailers will come, like they did in Linfield, so there's a lot of pieces that have to move and have to happen, but, but again, I listen to the same thing and then talk to Attorney Pollock.
Yeah, because when I, when, you know, I listen to comments about Gilchrist Road is, was an eyesore. I hate to tell you, Woodmont is an eyesore when you drive through there, you know, the way that, that looks.
It's not exactly what we all expected, you know, that'd be fair to say.
And, you know, I remember when the mall at Rockingham Park wasn't even proposed, and we were looking at four A, and Boston North was going to build a mall.
Right.
All right, and that took time, and all of a sudden, boom, Salem gets the mall. Well, you're not going to build another mall in, in Londonderry if there's already one in Salem.
Right.
And I guess that's one of my concerns, is that you look in the Tuscan Village, really growing, really getting developed. We're at a standstill here, and my concern is that it's going to be more residential and impact on our schools.
Understood.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
I can stand and I can speak from here, because I can clean a field. I taught school for twenty-five years in this town, and I taught thirty-three years, my initials are J.C., but I'm not Jesus. And I want you to know that I really, I'm not trying, sir, I can sit right here and say. I can sit right here and thank you.
So, ma'am, I just need. Thank you.
I live at thirty-eight South Road in Londonderry.
Thank you.
For forty-three years, I've been paying the town of Londonderry taxes. When my husband was sixty, which is almost seventeen years ago, he passed away with a massive heart attack without any of us knowing he was sick. And he was German, and he thought he was going to live forever, okay? Didn't go to the doctor, and didn't really set up much for me from when he passed. He had a great, I was able to bury him, and he suffered embolism because he was a vet. And I would like to go from here there, but I don't know where I'm going to go, because I can't afford your taxes. I'm one of those people who's, if you want to see my taxes, you're all welcome to see them, and I wouldn't mind looking at yours, because in comparison, I think it'd be a phenomenal difference. Now, I have taught math in elementary school, and I've taught it at Silver Learning. And when my daughter was in college at Revere, I worked two jobs so she could get through school. She doesn't have any college bills, but her mother has no likes. But other than that, I'm fine. But I'm not here to joke around, though. This is a tragedy to any old person. And I love this town. I mean, I wouldn't have stayed here for forty-three years, to end up with an income of forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents a year. I get money back on taxes because I do standard deductions, but every cent I get back is put into taxes that I pay you in July. And then I pray, and I save, and I don't get this, and I don't get that. So I can probably pay you in December. And the last three years, not this year, but the last three years before that, I've always had to finish paying in January. And that goes against my grain, because I was always a person who paid when it was handed to me to be due. Last year, I have a grandson who's living with me, and he gave me the three hundred and seventy-five dollars I needed to finish what I need to pay in that bill. I am begging you, because I think I'm going to have to sell my house and leave, I'm begging you to stop and think about the poor people. Don't pass out pill fees before I leave, because I feel like I'm being passed out a pill every time I read my tax forms and my taxes from the town of Londonderry. But I believe in God, and I refuse to let anybody kill me. So, but this is killing me, and a lot of people like me. And I urge you to listen to what Joe Green said tonight. I have gone to Joe over and over and over and begged, please do something. He and I go to church together. After church, Joe, is it going to change? It's not changing.
So this is our, this is our struggle, ma'am. I mean, so what happens is, is that, you know, the town is the agent that collects the money.
Yeah.
And twenty-three percent of it runs.
To the school?
No, actually, twenty-three percent of it runs to the town.
Okay, I know that.
So, and I know, and seventy-five percent of it runs to schools. So when we make adjustments on the town and the business, so let's say we change the salary piece, and let's say we give the veterans exemptions, that money comes out of the town side of the business.
Never out of the school?
No, because the way our government is set up in New Hampshire is, is that they give us a bill, and we have to pay it.
Okay.
So you probably have heard a number of us over the years go over to the schools and go, it's twenty-one thousand dollars a student, and you're spending eighty-four million dollars. And you would know this, we're down fifteen hundred kids. What are you doing? You know, and you may have seen the school board meeting last Tuesday, when I went in there and said, well, if you're going to have, I have eighty-four million reasons to be here, and you need to be number one. You're not number one, because people will pay for number one. But, you know, my argument is, if you're going to spend the money, be number one. So what we struggle with here on the town side of the business is, is that we want to be able to do things, but we only have, we can't take money away from them, because they won't let us. And the law won't let us. So what we've been saying to some of the, some of the folks like yourself is, is help us out. I mean, we're going to try, and I can promise you, we're going to have a conversation about it. But somebody go say something to the other seventy-five percent and say, hey, help us out.
I understand, sir. And I taught school here for twenty-five years. And I saw more people, because when I started out, sir, we were top-notch. I'm not saying we're that now, but everybody from everywhere came in here for our special ed programs.
Yep.
And I believe that's what's killing the school systems. I really, really do. And I have to say, I love Londonderry schools, but it's, it costs money to teach special ed children, and a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am. It's about twenty-six million.
The autism thing and everything like that.
I think it's twenty-six or twenty-eight million dollars a year for special needs in the town.
I know.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but you're right, it's expensive.
It's expensive. But it's because we were number one. And for to do that again, what are we going to do? Throw these special ed kids out? You can't do it. So I feel for them as well. You see, I have a heart for kids. But I have a heart for old people, too.
Yeah, we.
I have a heart for you. It's not an easy job. I don't think you have an easy job. But I have so many people, I almost have to sell my house to leave this town, that I love. And that's sad.
Yep, you're absolutely right. And as I said, I promise you, as Joe brought up, we will look at it. I don't know what we can or we can't do, but I can promise you it will get looked at.
Okay. All right. That's all I can talk about. And I hope you forgive my commentary, because I'm a big mouth. I talk a lot.
It's quite all right.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Are you school?
No.
No, are you school?
No.
So is there anyone else for public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. So before I move to the public hearing, I'm going to share with the council that, as the school liaison, I went to the school board meeting. And I made the statement to them, and it's not unlike the same statement I'm going to make here, is, is that it's really all about excellence. And what happens is, is you only get opportunities for windows to open for short periods of time. Like the schools who are transitioning their leadership, we're transitioning our leadership. So we have an opportunity here to jump to the next level. So what we're, you know, so what I said to the schools was, is that, you know, you're not Hanover or Hoptington. They're number one. We're not number one. And that, what's the plan to get there? You know, what's the plan to be the best? Because as I just said to that woman, it's hard to argue with being the best. So, and I didn't get a response, and nor was it shared, it was shared with me later, that there's not a plan, but they, but they think, they know they need to have a plan. You know, strive to be number one. It's the same thing here on the town side. Well, I think we do an excellent job in many areas. You know, we can always be better. We can always strive for excellence. So when we're looking at these goals and changing the process of how we're doing things, we're looking for the department heads to come forward and say, hey, I'm thinking outside the box. This is what we need to do. Or this is the new way I'm thinking about doing something. Or, you know, I had this idea. And what we want to do is, is get, you know, it's the old saying of more heads are better than one. And just try to come up with what's the best plan, so that we come into this year knowing a couple of things. One is, March inflation numbers were eight point four percent. It's the highest since nineteen seventy-six. It's also, jet fuel is up seventy-five percent. So everybody was planning on going on vacation in the summer, and you didn't buy your plane ticket yet? Get another hundred dollars if you want to go away, away per person. I mean, that's what, that's what they're basically saying. So what I'm looking for from the department heads is, is that try something different. Status quo just isn't going to cut it. So as we go into these goals, that's sort of what we're looking for. Anything else?
Well said.
All right, let's do the public hearing, then we'll move to the goals. Acceptance of public, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
What was in favor, sticking by by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative. Acceptance of unanticipated revenue pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B A R P A grant. Lisa.
Okay. Just a little refresher on the history here, Mr. Chair. I want to give you a little bit of context, so you can see where we've been and where we're going. Is step one in our exploration of establishing a public water system, the DES, the New Hampshire DES, is currently funding a feasibility study on the town's behalf. So we're not paying for step one. Over the last several months, we, meaning me, Town Manager Malaguti, John Trotter, and Bob Carey, have met with various representatives of the engineering firm engaged by DES to do that feasibility study. It's called Weston and Sampson, to discuss their findings and provide them with any and all Londonderry-specific information that they need to inform their assumptions. That study is looking at things like the expected water demand and basic infrastructure that would be necessary to bring the water into Londonderry. For example, extension and addition of water main routes, placement of pump stations, et cetera, among many other things that I am unable to explain as a non-engineer. They are in the final phase of that feasibility study. We should have that final report soon. The second step in the process is what we're here tonight to talk about. It would be a cost of service study, which will look at the ultimate questions like, if we were to establish a public water system, what would be the best model for Londonderry? For example, would it be to purchase the existing infrastructure, along with adding the necessary infrastructure, and run it all ourselves? Or perhaps we pay a third entity to run it, instead of hiring our own personnel? Or perhaps we work with the existing infrastructure owners, like Penachuck, Manchester Water Works, Dairy Water, and just add the other infrastructure needed to finish it out? And how do we tie in the small community water systems already in existence, or do we? It's very complicated. And then, based on each of those models considered, what would be the projected water rate for the actual customers, meaning our residents? So we've tapped the same engineering firm that's doing the feasibility study, step one, Weston and Sampson, to do step two, the cost of service study, which is projected to cost eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we've just finalized the scope of work document with them today, as a matter of fact. As the council will recall, we had put a warrant article, which passed on the March ballot, authorizing one hundred thousand dollars for this, what I'm calling step two of the process. As we do whenever possible, town staff has researched and applied for grant funding to, with DES. And I'm proud to say, we've been awarded fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, to partially defray the cost of that cost of service study. So that is the source of the unanticipated revenue presently before us in the public hearing, and the subject of the resolution you have before you tonight in the next section, new business.
Are there any questions?
No, I just would like to make a comment, if that's okay.
Of course.
I just want to say that I've spoke with Lisa a lot, because I've been pretty involved with a lot of these meetings. And I think she's doing a great job. I just want to know if you could guesstimate for the public.
Sure.
That when you say soon, months, lots of months, few months?
You mean in terms of when we'll have, so I think when I said soon, it is the final phase of the feasibility study for step one. We should have that in the next month or two.
That's great. And.
And then the cost of service will begin as soon as we get the funds from DES to start, because of course, we can't use our hundred thousand dollars till July one.
Okay. And I know that we've spoke about this, but the hotspots will be addressed first. So those people in.
Correct.
The most desperate situations will get looked at as a priority.
Correct.
And then down the chain from there. And the other thing is, is we are moving forward still, and people want to know this, I'm saying this basically for the public.
Absolutely.
The rebate is coming still, too.
It is still coming.
Hold tight. We're getting very close.
Yes. And so Counselor Paul makes a good point. The PFAS rebate program for those who have installed or plan to install some sort of treatment for their private residential wells is now being run by the state. They expect, they keep telling us, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. They're staffing up in order to be able to run that program. But that information, as soon as it becomes available, we will blast it out as well for our residents.
Right. And, you know, I just also want to echo what Mr. Bouchard was saying. We really have to be mindful in planning and our town. We're bringing in all of these housing, having enough water and sewer, not just quantity, but quality. And we really need to take time and a breath to get our infrastructure piped up to that level of housing, if that's what you want. Otherwise, it will end up costing way more than it would have done if you, if you do it backwards. Put the houses in first, and then the infrastructure. It will cost you more in tax dollars than if you do the infrastructure first and build the houses later. That's all. But you did a great job, and I just.
Thank you.
Want to say that, that you've been staying on top of the water really well.
Thank you.
It's a lot, a lot of moving pieces.
It is. I appreciate it.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Maybe else? So so far tonight, we've had one woman say she was J.C. Now Lisa's walking on water.
'Tis the season.
Yes, it is.
It can be witty.
Okay. Anything else? Accept the motion to close the public hearing?
So vote.
Anyone from the public? I'm sorry. Anyone from the public? Accept the motion to close the public hearing?
Do we have to vote on this?
We're going to vote in the next section.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
What was in favor, sticking by by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is closed. Finance Department, goals.
Mr. Chairman, I chatted briefly with both departments earlier today, and I think the PD may want to go first. Is that still accurate?
I'm only following the agenda.
I realize they're, they're in that order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that works. However you want to do it. I'm sure whatever they're going to have to say will be.
Thank you for this opportunity to share our goals briefly with you. Deputy Chief Bernard is going to handle the lion's share. The only reason I wanted to address the council is to say, great job in making a permanent appointment with Mr. Malaguti. I won't take entire credit for his municipal skills, because I was accompanied by Lisa Drabek. But this town will be well-served by Mike Malaguti, and I'm so thrilled that he has this opportunity, as does the town of Londonderry. With that, Deputy Chief Bernard.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Members of the council, we were asked to bring forward some goals for the upcoming twenty-two year. Mr. Chair, today I have three of them, and I'd like to touch base on those with you. First off, goal number one, we're going to continue to be financially responsible with our budget. One of the ancillary goals is to fully fund some lines, shore them up. I'd like to share with you, if I can, an example of one of those. Building maintenance is listed as eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Thank you.
In that line. Excuse me. We've been routinely over-expended in this line for eighteen years. One example of the maintenance line, your police department building, preventative maintenance system, yearly checks on our boilers, our heating and our cooling systems, that's a cost. And to bring light, this coming, actually, last month, the Services Bureau had an inspection done, and we looked at what it would cost to clean and maintain our heating and duct system in a police department. The duct work has not been cleaned yet since we've been in this building. We know it's time. It has to get done. By doing this, it's going to also reduce costs as far as the energy, rising energy costs. So one quote that we've received so far was thirty thousand. Thirty thousand dollars to maintain that, it's not, it's a large dollar amount. And we look at the eighteen thousand, seven hundred that we routinely have, we're not going to get it from that. So we look at some other areas of cost, vehicle maintenance. Vehicle maintenance line, we're budget for four thousand dollars. We've been at four thousand dollars since two thousand and twelve. We're well over that every year by two thousand percent. This amount is not enough to cover just oil changes, wipers, tire rotations, washer fluid, vehicle inspections for our fleet. This also covers minor costs of damage that's not submitted to our insurance company. So for example, just oil changes alone, it's roughly five thousand dollars a year. Goal number two, we have for the police department is recruiting and retention. This is not just new to Londonderry, but it's a nationwide problem. As we discussed many times with the council before, we have a very stringent and intrusive background process. On average, one out of four pass that. From the time the officers apply to finishing up a background, we're looking at four to six months. From the time the officer applies to finishing up a background, we're looking at four to six months time lapse. And then they have two weeks of in-house academy before they tend to police academy in Concord. Our recruits will then spend close to four months there. They come back to us for three more months of field training. So it's roughly one year before the officer counts as a body on the road. As we discussed before, the process is always ongoing here in London. There, we realized that we needed to have open enrollment. The open enrollment program, we try to solicit certified officers from around the state. We've been very fortunate many years in a row for getting some of the best officers from outside agencies. Our open enrollment, for those who don't know, is throughout the year, the Services Bureau will advertise that we're taking open enrollment. Officers come in, they go through this series of panels and questioning. And we try to find the ones that fit Londonderry, the officers that we know that you expect us to give you. That alone takes quite some time. Two months ago, we lost an officer to retirement. We have another one retiring at the end of this month. We have another one retiring in July. Look at the time it takes us to maintain or to get one officer on the road, we're going to lose two more in the next four months. This last three decades, we have never had this happen here. We've lost three officers to retirement, early retirement. They did not have their twenty years with Londonderry. They have been left for civilian work. We've never had that happen. This trend is not happening just in Londonderry, it's happening everywhere else too. So what are we going to do? We need to maintain what we've already have. We need to focus on the employees we have. We need to continue to bring in qualified Londonderry officers that you guys have known to be accustomed to. We're going to continue to do that. People want to come to Londonderry Police Department because of our reputation. They want to come here because of the quality of police work. They want to come here because of the relationship that we have with you folks. They want to come here because of the training they get, the equipment they get. We have a lot to offer. We're going to continue to do that. And the last goal we have this year is Kalia. We're going to work closely with the Office of Professional Standards to ensure that we adhere to the best practices model, which we have known to be clear. This prestigious title is a part of our town now. It's up to us to maintain and hold that. Mr. Chair, as you say, Londonderry leads the way. I believe with the community's support, direction from the Town Council, the Finance Department, we will strive to be number one and make you guys proud.
Questions from the council?
Could you just, do you have ideas for how you're going to get to where you're going to, what you're talking about as your goals? Do you have a plan? Do you have any like thought on how you're going to retain people? Or have you been talking to some of the people when they left, like, they kind of doing like little survey work, taking a regular officer who was friends with that officer, give him a call up, hey Joe, just curious, why did you leave? You know, and then like recon work, you know, bring it back and find out why and what are the reasons and, you know, I don't know, I'm just.
Sure.
Looking at these as pretty substantial problems and trying to figure out how we're going to deal with them.
Okay, it's a great question and those three particularly, obviously their personnel matters and some of the, some of the reasons are quite obvious. They left for better pay. They left for jobs on Monday through Friday. They left for jobs that not going to be ordered over to work a midnight shift, be held over to work a day shift. Different opportunities out there. We lost one of our very qualified investigators to go into the private sector to lead a firm in financial fraud. We lost another officer to a company in town to, to work on Monday through Friday job, doing something he had a passion for. And lastly was, was another up and coming young lady that worked for us. She received the job offer that she couldn't pass up. Again, higher pay, home at night with her kids, be with her husband on the weekends. Don't have to worry about babysitters, not being ordered over. I think that when we look at what we've done historically here, I think our reputation is what still draws qualified candidates here. And to, to maintain that, we got to continue with what we do. We have to give them, as Mr. Chairman has pointed out many times, we have to give them training. We have to give them the best resources available to make them successful. And you know, I think as, as the administration, we have to support our employees. And we understand, we recognize that these shifts can be long. Being ordered over is not always great. But if they come to work, they feel appreciated, we respect them, and we're just decent people to them, they'll stay.
Do you think that the, the odd hour shifts and the long days and nights and weekends is the bigger problem as opposed to the actual salary? I mean, where do we compare with everybody else in the state? I mean, and when I say everybody, I mean not like Manchester, I mean towns like ours.
So I don't know where we stand currently, but years prior, we were in the top five, maybe.
So we're in the top five for paying?
I don't know if we are.
You think the, the other obstacle is the thing that really is the.
Well, I don't know if we're in the.
Nine to five job is.
Sure, I don't know if we're in the top five pay anymore.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if we're in the top five pay brackets anymore. But that is something that we're going to.
Stand like.
I, I, maybe the top ten, five to ten maybe.
Okay.
That's something that with the collective body agreements and those things that the town will work with, I'm sure, with the unions to figure those things out. As far as the, the hours, there's not many jobs out there where you have to say goodbye to your wife and kids or your husband or whatnot and not know if you're going to be ordered over tonight because staffing is low or when we had the COVID situations happening in our community, we were down a lot of officers. People were getting tired of being ordered over two or three times a week.
So you think that was, do you think that's the bigger reason or do you think the salary is the bigger reason?
I think it was a combination of both, to be honest. And again, we're looking at, when, when I got hired here in Londonderry twenty-one years ago, I worked everything I could. I ordered over, it just what we did. I think it's changed a little bit. I don't think that's the same for everybody. For me, I had a young family, I had no choice but to do that. And I think that it's, it's shifting. So I think pay is important. I think quality of, of work is important. The community is important to these officers, they come aboard. And I think leadership internally with our department is a major plus. Out of all the recruits that we have hired from outside agencies, they're all shocked when they come to work with us. They're shocked at how they're treated. They're shocked at the, the welcoming they receive from all of you folks when they get first sworn in. They are shocked and, and we recently got applauded with one of the firefighters who said the same thing when she came over here. She couldn't believe the way that they're treated. I, I think that holds a lot for us, but it's not the be all end all. And I think working together with the CBAs and, and the Town Council, I think we can figure out how to retain them and make them stay.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out obstacles and, you know, low hanging fruit that we can move up a little bit, you know? I think that if you could get some of those guys and do like, like a mini podcast about what makes you different. Like a little video and, you know, from even people who have retired or, you know, and people who have stayed, you know, what was the experience? You just said that it was a different, they came in and they were like shocked. I mean, that kind of testimonial speaks volume to people who are out there, may had bad taste in their mouth, another officer, another town and said, boy, that was nasty, but you know, this looks better. You know what I mean?
Right.
It, it might.
It's a great idea. We, we can add that to part of our recruitment thing. I think that wouldn't hurt.
I mean, it can't hurt, right? That's all, I'm sorry.
That's good, that's good.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
In regards to recruitment, as I've shared before, I mean staffing, do you send your recruiters to like professional staffing courses and nego, like, well, obviously negotiation's a little different, but like on techniques and skills to, to build off of councillor Paul. There's a lot of great like HRAs, human resource associations and stuff that have like specific training on staffing and stuff like that. I'd recommend, especially if there's like a recruitment and retention concern that you have. There's a lot of great programs that experts will teach on like things to identify and look at and stuff. And we can, you know, know yourself, seek self-improvement. I think it would be a great opportunity to explore that option, so.
Sure, thank you. I made a note of that. We do do a lot of, we go to college job fairs. We hit the Reserve Center here in Londonderry. We've even gone as creative as putting flyers out at local gyms to try to recruit people. I, I think this is a, it's a nationwide issue and again, it's not just Londonderry. But we do have something special and we, we try to use that as much as we can to bring people aboard.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the Assistant Town Manager has some relevant experience of, of recent note. This is something that, as, as Deputy Chief pointed out, it's not just a Londonderry concern. It's something that people are thinking about at the state level and, and local communities, probably every local community around the state. And Lisa, I don't know if you can just share briefly.
Sure, I, thanks, Mike. I've been asked to sit on a Recruitment and Retention Committee up at the Fire Academy. And it is focused exclusively on fire at least, but there are folks from all segments of public safety because it's public safety wide and it's, it's not only statewide, it's nationwide. It's a nationwide problem right now. And we're finding there to be, or at least the anecdotal evidence is it's a generational thing as well. The new crop of folks coming in are not necessarily the ones that are looking to work all the overtime, right? They're much more concerned about quality of life and that sort of thing. So it, it's finding strategies to focus on those sorts of things to both recruit and retain those individuals while keeping in mind the other generations that you still have in the workforce. So it's a challenge for sure.
And I would applaud you for being on that committee. I think that's great because, you know, it just goes to talk about what I was mentioning earlier in regards to seminars and programs and stuff, so thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else, gentlemen? You all set, Joe?
I'm good.
You all set, Joe?
Thank you.
All right, so the only thing I would say is, is that recently I was, recently I was on an email thread. And the, the sender sent an email to someone asking them for, hey, where's the plan? And the, the recipient of that email sent back in caps, no plan. The devil's in the details. So I think what we're going to want to see is, is goals are great, but we're going to want to see what's the, what's the plan to the town manager of how we're going to get this done? And you know, let's document it and then let's follow it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I clearly misunderstood, I focused on the goals. We already have plans characterized by our ongoing strategic plan to deal with each of these areas. And certainly we'll get that to the town manager in short order.
That's great.
This is a part of what we do at, certainly at the executive level all the time.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can probably figure out that, you know, that, that email spurred my conversation with the school department. As long as we have a plan, we're executing against it. That's what it's about and that's how we get to the next level. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for the suggestion and thank you.
See, the, the advantage of going second, Justin. Is, is, now you know what we're looking for.
Absolutely. Justin Campbell, the Finance Director, as many are aware. As my letter that I sent out to you guys states, the Finance Department has a little bit of a different responsibility than a lot of the other departments that you'll be speaking to. Essentially, we're here to assist and help those departments achieve their goals. The main goal of the Finance Department, as always, is to ensure the financial safety of the, of the resources given to us and entrusted to us by the taxpayers, which my department takes extremely seriously. Along with that, we have roughly three things that, you know, we're working on in addition to our daily and main goals of assisting the other departments achieving their goals. The first one would be rebuilding the town's undesignated fund balance. Currently, we are in line with our own policy. However, the GFOA and DRA recommended guidance, we are below. This helps assist with cash flow during the tight times should, for whatever reason, tax bills be coming in later, motor vehicles be trending downward, things of that nature. It allows us to maintain operations with the cash flow without taking out a tax anticipation notice or a TAN, which essentially pays us the tax money upfront that we then pay interest on. It also allows us the ability to review projects upcoming and use our fund balance to potentially assist in defraying those costs over the life of the project. Things such as when we take out a bond or anything of that nature. Where we don't have any of those on the radar currently, it hasn't been a concern. And right now, the fund balance level, this isn't me saying it's a concern. It's me saying, looking forward with potential recession coming up, it would be a good time to be able to ensure our cash flow for the future of the town. The next one, which as you heard from the Police Department, you'll likely hear from a lot of the other departments, is work on the town budget to determine adjustments that are needed from their personnel and non-personnel lines to more accurately reflect not only the desired but likely spending. That was one of the topics previously during the last budget cycle and the budget cycle previously, and I think that we need to be in line with that. The next one with that along is working with residents to have them fully understand and feel comfortable reaching out to the Finance Department to ask a question about, hey, what's going on with this? Just today, I responded to an email of somebody who read something on social media and said, wait a minute, what, why is this happening? What's going on? And I informed them that, well, no, this unfortunately is not correct. This is the actual situation. As I've told people, anyone that talks to me, you may not like what I have to say, but I'm going to tell you the truth. I'd rather you be mad at me for the truth than something you heard that's incorrect. The third goal that I have here is somewhere down the line, potentially adding an additional part-time individual to the staff. The Town Council has emphasized greatly going out and getting grants. Today, we just accepted fifty thousand. All those grants have strict compliance. They're federal grants that have strict compliance. We were to go through and maintain those. But currently, the best way I can put it is when I started in fiscal year twenty sixteen, the town received about ninety-seven thousand dollars in grants. We're not through this fiscal year yet and we already have one point six million dollars. A lot of it, unfortunately, or not unfortunate, a lot of it is from COVID, but perfect example is this fifty thousand we just accepted is from COVID where we're able to go and use it to assist in another project. My concern is with all this money, I want to keep it going. I want to provide the highest level of service as possible to the taxpayers with the additional help that we're able to get that's out there. My staff is currently close, if not at capacity, with what we have. In addition to that, one of the other concerns is risk management. With the amount we have in my department right now, we're not able to segregate duties as well as I would like to. It's the devil of a beast. It's saving us a lot of money tax-wise and we're able to oversee all of it, so it's not a large concern. But there is the potential that this, not the potential, this would reduce our risk manager, our risk. Yeah, exactly. It gives another set of eyes on everything and allows for further segregation of duties.
Okay. Questions? Mister, oh, sorry.
Oh, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I just amplify one thing that he touched upon, I, I just think it's important that everybody recognizes the amount of information that he pushes out to residents who call asking for information. He never circles the wagons. He's an open book. As he said, you may not like what he, what he has to say, but he tells you the truth as, as he sees it and I think that that's admirable. And I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
And if I could amplify one other thing, Mr. Chair, with each grant that we receive, there are numerous compliance requirements that, that I think Justin didn't adequately let you know about because he handles it all with aplomb and without letting one know, but reporting requirements, you know, certain paperwork, timeliness, et cetera. So with every grant that we get, it's great, but we heap upon his department more responsibilities for tracking those grants and making sure that we stay compliant to keep the grant, so.
And along that as well, should the agency that offers it to us, awards it to us, request to come in and audit, which they have every right to, they go into detail, which takes time, which takes me away from doing other things for the town. We had one where they came in and we were discussing a thirteen dollar receipt for a hundred and, I want to say eighty-seven thousand dollar grant. We were, we were discussing a thirteen dollar receipt. So they go into a detail which it takes time and takes me away from other. So they go into detail, which it takes time and takes me away from other duties for the town.
Thank you. So I do appreciate the fact that you are diligently seeking grants to expand and, and search for new ones. I've been beating that drum for the three years I was on the Budget Committee. And I appreciate that you had also sought other resources like that grant writing company and.
I have a meeting with him on Wednesday to discuss other options.
Okay, great. And I just, I think, I'll repeat what I've always been saying is there's one thing better than money. It's free money, especially if it is not to the expense, expense of the taxpayer. And I think that's great. And I just would strongly support your continuance of utilizing those tools and the grants that's available and partnering with other agencies that might have other resources that we might not. And I commend you and I do appreciate as a taxpayer and hearing from, from other taxpayers in the community, your, just the continuance of that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms.
Continue on the grant issue. Over the years, you know, I see the Fire Department, the Police Department, the town come try to get grants and it's pretty specialized to a certain extent. My question is, would it be better for us to find some? I know we have, I assume there's an outside contractor you're working with.
The outside contractor helps us obtain the grants themselves.
Some of them.
Yeah, some of them.
Right.
Is it, is it worth our while to look to see if we can find someone?
To fully manage them?
To fully manage them and go after them? Because I would assume that the Fire Department's in the back of the room. Are they the ones that look for their grants?
They do.
Yes.
Yep.
Are the Police Department there looking for their grants?
Yes.
Are you guys looking?
But then someone has to write them too.
Understood.
Yep.
So the, the question is, it is specialized and we're using their resources to look for grants. Would it be smart enough for us to get someone that can do that and that can write it? Because if we can get the money and the money is there, what's the best way to handle it?
I, I would agree with that. And it's one where you look at our current grant writer. What typically happens is the Police Department and Fire Department will go out, find the grants they want. They have a limited capacity. Once they, you know, if they have three grants they want, but only one person will write them at that time because they're busy with other things, we try to get that individual to come and write the grants for us. But at the same point, he's not here. He doesn't have our information. So he still has to contact someone at those departments and he's still taking up those time.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. I, I do want to applaud you too. You did a great job. Every time I ask a question, you explain it to me in baby terms so that I understand it.
Me too.
But I was thinking, Jim stole my thunder on a grant writer, a professional grant writer. Now, you're talking that you might like, like to have a part-time position. Would it be better to use the money for a finding, I don't know if it would be part-time or full-time, grant writer? And then that would free up a lot of work that you have to do or other staff so that you wouldn't need that other extra person. Another, do you know what I'm saying? They would take that off of your plate. I mean, yes, you're getting an extra person, but the person is specific to just grant writing and detailing. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that would be great as long as they're helping with the compliance and the, after the fact as well.
Right, that, they would do everything within the.
Similar to a lot of school districts, a lot of school districts have sometimes a department or at least one individual where their job is essentially go get grants and then maintain all those grants.
Yep. And is there anything in the, in your department that could be outsourced?
So we've worked on that actually. Mr. Chairman talked about speaking outside of the box. And I'm sure you remember previously, we had the credit card program that brought back large rebates.
Correct.
Large 40 to 60,000. That was great. That was amazing. However, our AP clerk would have to call the vendors to get them to take the credit card over the phone and do it that way. Once they started knowing our vendors' lunch schedules, I realized we got to do something because it's taking up too much time compared to what we're getting in return. So we went, did an RFP to find another program that works. And we have, it's, it's called Paymode X from Bottomline Technologies where essentially what happens is we send them the file and they take care of sending that, it's a virtual card to that vendor to pay.
Bottomline's a great company.
Yeah, and they, we still receive a rebate and they call them dividends on returns because they either, the vendors will either take a virtual card, premium ACH, where they receive a lot more information, regular ACH, or a check if they say no to all of it. So that's one where it kind of freed up opportunities there.
Good job.
There was another one I wanted to mention too with that, but I can't think of it at this time. Paymode is one of the big ones.
The other thing I'd like to say that I, I like what you're doing is, I know I asked this a long time ago, is getting to the actual cost of running, the real cost in running each department. So you can see where the weaknesses are, where the strengths are, and you can adjust appropriately. So I applaud you for doing that because it's really important. It, I know it's a bottom line budget and whatever, but there's an actual cost.
You want to know how much each one costs, but as we discussed previously, there's times where you kind of want to pull it together. And I look at health insurance as that where by pulling it together, we are now mitigating the risk of, you know, a smaller department, my, my department. If somebody leaves and they're on a single plan or a buyout and they come in with a family plan, you're looking at a 2,500 to 30,000 where now it's, so by pulling it together.
We've had this conversation, but I'm talking about the actual, taking those pieces out.
Yep, no, I.
Actual cost of things. I mean, if, if, if it's costing X to get this thing done, it should be saying X, not taking it from here, taking it from there. So that you can look at that problem, whether it's a positive or negative, and say, how can we fix it?
Yep. And that's why I always tell my departments or the departments to, when they're charging an expense, charge it to the appropriate account. Because I want the actual numbers. So that way, when you come and ask, I'm able to give you the actual number, not, well, hold on, this was here, but that's here. I'm able to give you the actual number.
I, I just think that's cleaner and it's, it's better and it, it just, I think will help in the future, performance-wise, to do a lot better. So, and you're right. I don't always agree with you, but you've always been pleasant and professional with our conversations. So thank you.
Jim, yes. So I won't parrot everything that's been said already about trying to find those, those monies elsewhere besides the taxpayer. Bravo for that. And want to continue. I'm really happy to hear that. But I did want to talk a little bit about the town's fiscal year budget. And I know, I see what you wrote here, which is good. And you and I have had conversations about it where, you know, we're looking at elderly exemptions, we're looking at tax credits that are coming up. And, you know, how do we fund these? Well, sometimes the devil's in the detail, you know? When Tom Fried was around, we dug into those budgets really, really closely. And I applaud you by, for saying that that's what you want to do. We have done it over the past few years since you've been the director, but, a couple of years. But I think we have an opportunity to do more because when we find those line items that may, may not necessarily be spent completely at a hundred percent rate, it's been folded in to the budget, right, for year after year after year. But if we were to put that right fit, okay, it's something, I'm just saying, saying something, $10,000 in the budget, we always put $5,000 is, is actually charged to that. Well, there's $5,000 more of budgetary numbers that maybe could go towards some of these things that we're identifying up here. It's not always that we have to go to the taxpayers and ask them to increase. Because I know, you know, some of these calculations of how much more would it be as a tax, tax impact? Well, I say, no, it shouldn't be any tax impact. Let's find it in the budget somewhere by those, those methods. Tighten, tighten the ship a little bit. So I look towards, you know, this year coming up, when we start to do budgeting, to be using those type of really, really tight analysis to, to gain those type of things, to be able to pass on tax rates and elderly exemptions to the people that need them. So thank you.
Okay, so, Justin, there, there's somebody in your department now who does have a grant writing skill, don't they?
They do, but they're tasked with plenty of other things at this point.
But they could also teach somebody, right?
Yes.
How do we feel about outsourcing payroll?
This has been looked into.
Last time was about six or seven years ago.
I can look into it. But you have to keep in mind, you use a lot of.
Free somebody up, right? And if it, and if it, if we don't have to hire another person, wow. And I know it's a split job. I don't quite understand that, but I, I know it is.
Yep. The, so our payroll clerk spends a lot of time with HR as well as doing the payroll. In terms of outsourcing the payroll and using it for other, other sources, it, it's a good idea in theory. My concern is a lot of these payroll companies, when issues come up, they still have to go to somebody at the business to do it, which would still be her. And now it's not her information she's working on. It's what the company is giving her.
I would note too, just, just for the record, that right now, our payroll person is not full-time. So we're not paying the full boat of health insurance or anything like that. So I think the cost would be very much in, in order of two or three times the cost of the employee that we have right now.
So I use ADP as a, as an employee. And I can tell you, I've never had a conversation with an HR person. And it's, I think we have to look at, it's become very self-service, like many other things. So, you know, it's a possibility.
It is. And like I said, I will look into it. One of the things to keep in mind, however, though, is you're not, you, you don't deal with midnight shifts plus differentials, things of that nature that the police and fire deal with. Where you're booking, you know, okay, is it the airport? Is it the airport on the Homeland Security grant? Is it town? Where's the overtime fill? Things of that nature where it gets a lot more complicated, where we would then have to take that phone call and reach out to ADP to say, hey, what's going on here?
And like I said, I'm, I'm assuming as big payroll companies, they probably have some knowledge. So.
But we have to also look at what they would cost us to do that and what would the benefit be versus the cost of it? I've had a couple of meetings with, you know, the cold calls that call me up and say, hey, I want to, you know, set up a meeting. And I've met with some of them and the cost is unfortunately, it's, it's prohibitive.
Unfortunately, we'd have to move away from weekly payroll before we have a better cost benefit analysis.
Likely, yes. And that would be discussions for unions and things of that nature.
I understand. The other thing I'd probably like to see is, is I would, I'd probably like to see you more intimately, and maybe you are already, but more intimately involved in the actual decision-making that some of the department heads are making and why they're making it and, and question it.
I can tell you that, Mr. Chairman.
I can assure you, yes.
In the.
Listen, I, I don't know.
Sure.
Yeah, that, that is, is well underway.
I'm working on that.
It's a, it's a joint effort.
Participatory government. Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, for that payroll thing, there is a, a local company and the owner lives in town. The business is in town, business sense. And they do do that. And they will come and, and work with you in conjunction. And because it's so intimate, it might be better than a bigger company because they're small and they can come here in a heartbeat to help you with different things. And they do everything from payroll to HR to all that other stuff. And if there is a mistake, they're the ones financially responsible. Because they, that's just kind of nice protection. Because they, you know, they would get hurt. They sign everything and make sure that it's them that gets the.
One last thing before I step away. To the public out there listening, as I've said previously, if you have questions, feel free to give me a call. You may not like what I have to say, but I'll tell you the truth. And I'd rather have you mad at me for the truth than a misunderstanding.
Thank you.
What's your extension?
138.
Thank you.
603-432-1100, extension 138.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
That's Justin.
Okay, so moving on. Resolution 202205. A resolution relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31:95-B. This is the one that we discussed during public hearing. Can I have a motion to accept?
Sure.
Second.
Any questions? Well, those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was affirmative, resolution carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would note that in addition to signing the resolution, there's a certificate of vote.
I just saw that.
Thank you.
It says here the notary's got to.
I can take care of that. Yep.
You're, you're seeing me?
I'm seeing you. Yep.
I'll let you fill the rest of that in. I have resolution 2022-06, a resolution relative to the Veterans Tax Credit Policy, first reading. Does anyone want to speak to us?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm just going to recuse myself.
Okay. Make a motion to waive the first reading.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Well, those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Thank you. Recycling Center Credit Card Update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is something that I just wanted to provide the council an update with. And also, I think the Finance Director would like to address the convenience fee. So before I stepped up into this current role, there was an effort, I think driven by the council, if I understand correctly, that we accept credit cards at the drop-off center. I'm, I'm happy to report that that, per, per the staff, it was up and running in November of '21, so November of last year through the closing date. It was a pilot program. And so during that period of time, the service fees were waived. The program will be back up and running this time on a permanent basis on April 16th, when the drop-off center opens. And I do have the Finance Director here to address the convenience fee, which I understand was addressed previously at the council level as well.
Please proceed.
Absolutely. So one thing I want to mention is we say waived. It wasn't waived. The town paid for it instead of the individual using the credit card, instead of using their check. My thought is we have a low convenience fee to allow those that want to use a credit card to use a credit card. However, it doesn't force those that still want to use a check to end up paying for that person using their credit card.
Okay. What do you want to do? This is that whole decision-making thing. What do you want to do?
I've talked with Bob Carey, who's, works with them, and we're working between $1.50 and $2.50. And again, it's.
Pick, pick an easy number.
$2.50.
Pick an easy.
$2.
That's a much easier number.
I like it. We have, we have to.
So now, wait a minute. What's the, what's the, what's the average, what's the average recycling fee? What do we think the average is going through there? Is $20?
Forty. I pay forty every single time.
That I'm not sure about.
And what's our, what's our convenience fee? 2.6%?
7.5%.
2.75? So $2.75 on $100 and you want to charge $2?
So what you have to keep in mind as well is this $2 will be for those that come and use it for their $7, $5, $10, things of that nature.
Well, I understand. I mean, you know.
I, I want it $2.50.
This is not a negotiation. So if I come in there with $500, I'm going to pay $2?
If you use your credit card, yes.
What do you guys want to do?
And essentially, what this is doing is it's supplementing it.
Can't you just add a percentage on to it? What do you pay for your, your, what does the merchant charge you?
Depends on the credit card, the level of threat it is. And it, it's between 2.4 and 3.8.
Okay, so I pay a flat 2.2 across the board, whatever credit card, American Express, Discover, whatever. So my point is if you find the average, and this way the person knows, you go there, you're going to pay 2% because of the credit card. You just add it right in. 2% is 2%. Two percent is two percent. This way you're not losing money or three percent, whatever. The, I mean, I don't, if you want to make money, make it a little bit higher than that percentage, but it's just an average.
So this, I'll be honest, this is not the response I was expecting, considering the last time I brought this up, I was told we shouldn't be charging a convenience fee.
Well.
It's a processing fee.
It's a different, it's a different. So I, so I would recommend to you that you come up with a tiered approach. So if it's fifty dollars and under, it's two dollars. If it's.
Yep, that's one of the options we've.
If it's a hundred dollars and over, it's three dollars per hundred.
That's one of the options we discussed.
So, you know, come up with something that, you know, that is some sort of tiered approach that's easy for the operators down there to do.
Yep, and that's why I wanted to do a dollar where we can have it as.
So if it's under fifty dollars, it's a, it, it's a dollar. If it's over fifty dollars, it's two dollars. If it's over a hundred dollars, it's three dollars. If it's over two hundred dollars, it's five dollars. Let's, let's make it so it's easy for the operators.
Yep. That was one of the options we discussed. So we can move forward with that then.
Yeah?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Just make sure you get a sign up there, big enough for everybody to see.
Yes, and it's actually already on the, um, advertisements they put out that there will be a service or convenience charge.
Still need to sign.
Make it simple.
Next we're going year round over there?
Um, and just so you're aware, right now we have one. We have a second one coming. The iPad to make it work is currently being mailed to us. So once we receive that, it'll be up and running.
I mean, I, as, not as many people are carrying checks around anymore, so we gotta, we gotta figure out another way to do this.
You're talking to the right person. I've written maybe ten checks my entire life.
There you go. You're my example.
Isn't, isn't, isn't DP, do you bring the goal of all year round, um, recycling?
I, I, that, well, that is, if you get Dave going with, uh, with his big ideas, you know, that, that one will be on the list. I, I guarantee it.
Keeping the thing open year round as long as you can staff it.
Right.
Right.
So. Okay.
That was easy. There we go.
It's just keep, keep it as simple as possible for the operators.
That's what I was going for.
Thank you, Justin.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanted to update the, uh, council on discussions that I've been having and the Finance Director, uh, have had with the Lions, the Landry Lions. Um, as the council knows, the Lions have leased the old, uh, Town Hall building, it was also the Police Department, I understand, at one point in time, uh, from the town for approximately forty years. It's an historical building that's several hundred years old. Uh, the lease is for nominal rent and it requires the Lions to maintain the building at their sole cost. They've done their best over the years, uh, but the maintenance costs have been and will continue to be significant going forward. Over the last ten years, the town has also, uh, contributed significantly to the maintenance costs, uh, despite the terms of the lease that I just mentioned that, uh, uh, require, uh, the Lions to do that. Late last year, the town determined, uh, that it could not continue contributing to the maintenance, uh, costs, at least without, not without amending the lease. We've had several discussions with, uh, the Lions and those discussions have been productive. Uh, we've looked at the Lions finances, they, they opened their books, uh, to us, and both sides have come to the conclusion that, um, it, it's a, it's a big ask for the Lions to continue, uh, to fund the maintenance costs while still achieving their charitable goals. I want to acknowledge, uh, that the Lions have contributed significantly to the maintenance of that building over the years. They've taken on a number of major repairs and they've been good stewards of the building. What brings me here tonight is the recognition that both sides have, uh, that the current situation is not tenable. I suggest the council, uh, consider whether the Lions Hall might become a town facility, where the Lions and other civ- civic groups could meet, uh, but which facility is controlled by the town. I make this suggestion because I cannot advise the council, uh, to invest heavily in the building for the benefit of a single organization, no matter how worthy the cause may be. This is one possible solution. There may be others. Um, if there is a consensus that we should explore this, it should be recognized that there are likely to be significant costs to the town. Um, there are ADA requirements that are likely to, uh, take effect. There are structural concerns about that building. Uh, there are safety concerns and there are concerns about how rental of the facility would be managed. But it is an important historical structure, and my informed assumption is that selling it or demolishing it is, is not an option. I wanted to update the council on these discussions, uh, in my appraisal of the situation and get the council's input and direction on the, on the matter.
So, are you okay with him going forward and looking at other, other options?
In, in, including, you know, some information on what those improvements would cost, right? I mean, I'm sure, right? Okay.
Of, of course, yes. I mean, it's, it's, it's still in its infancy, this, um, exploration, and so that, that would have to be part of the discussion, Councilor.
Thank you. But to answer your question, I mean, I don't think a rip down and demolish is, is, is in, is in the realm of.
No.
No, you have a few more people in the audience, I would expect, if, if that were.
I'm just saying, as far as I'm concerned, you know.
Might be a good place for your new son, electronic son.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's pursue it and see what's the, um, you know, see what the possibilities are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Yeah.
Even though we, um, already waived the public hearing, would it make, make sense to talk about these tax credits, or do you want to just take care of it at the next meeting? We, we have.
Whatever you guys want to do.
We have a, uh, we have something that was prepared by, um, Mr. Malaguti, so we just didn't know if, uh, we should, we should discuss it or not.
It's up to you all. It's your meeting. If you want to talk about tax credits here, or if you want to wait until the public hearing.
Well, we have it tonight, so I figured we could talk a little bit.
I'm, I'm happy to, uh, just briefly explain what you have in front of you. It, we've talked about this, uh, idea for several meetings. Um, it's been driven by the council, uh, which is concerned about recognizing our, our veterans. I have, uh, prepared, uh, a resolution, uh, in line with what I suggested the last time, uh, which was to increase both of these exemptions, so the all-veterans exemption and the optional, uh, Veterans Tax Credit, by half of what we could increase them by, um, now. And that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So to, uh, provide some, some history, back in, uh, two thousand and seventeen, the council did vote to, uh, adopt the recently all, authorized All-Veterans Tax Credit, and to phase it into the, uh, maximum benefit, which was five hundred dollars at that time. Subsequent to that vote, uh, the legislature authorized towns to actually offer a higher benefit, a seven hundred and fifty dollar benefit, for both the All-Veterans Tax Credit as well as the Optional Veterans Tax Credit. In the discussions that I've had, uh, with you, I have cautioned, um, you that the, there is no budget for, uh, increasing the exemption in, uh, this year, uh, or, or in the coming fiscal year for which the budget is already set. Um, that being said, the projected cost of doing this, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, is something where, uh, the Finance Director and I are comfortable advising you is likely to be able to be absorbed into the budget, uh, this coming year. I said at the last meeting, this is not a budgetary best practice. Um, I, I don't, I don't love doing this, but it is a, it's a worthy, uh, uh, cause and, um, uh, it's not going to get us into, uh, fiscal trouble, um, uh, doing it that way. I, I do caution against going, uh, all the way, uh, just given the economic, uh, conditions that, that seem to be transpiring. We are still projecting healthy surpluses, um, but I, I think we still need to be cautious, um, and so that's why I've made the recommendation that I've made.
So, um, thank you for that. With all due respect, I think that, um, you know, as, as some of us have heard tonight, tonight and have heard, um, not only on email and voicemail and, 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 and calls directly live, that, um, you know, people are hurting out there, you know, and, uh, and the thing is that whether, whether we do have deep pockets or not, uh, they, you know, people perceive us that we could figure out a way to, to help them. Um, just like the woman that spoke tonight. Um, and we have to try to figure out a way. If we really feel that these are that important, and to the woman that came tonight, if those folks that are suffering in silence, as I like to say sometimes, she wasn't certainly in silence tonight, but, uh, you know, I think that, uh, we've got to try to find a way. Um, so, uh, and it, I understand we have to be good stewards of, of the taxpayer, but I also think that, uh, we have to help people, uh, that live in our town and not have to move out of the town, uh, because of things that, things are, that, things like this that are out there. So, I don't know if there's a way, uh, we, we talked about it earlier, I don't know if there's other ways of, of funding this, uh, through grants or something else. I, I don't really know. Um, who would know? I don't know if that's a, a different avenue that we can look at, but, um, there's a reason why the state went up to seven hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, uh, uh, and, you know, to, to be, to allow us to do that. And I think that, you know, it's a, it's another hundred fifteen thousand and, um, you know, to, to go at the maximum. And, uh, you know, the same reason why in two thousand seventeen, we, we went and chose to phase that in and, and, and get to the maximum as fast as possible. I think we need to, you know, uh, understand that this is where we need to be. And I think that was, at that point, it was like two hundred and fifty dollars, um, a year. Um, so this is really all we're doing right now is, is taking another phase and of, another step in that phase of two hundred and fifty dollars, so. But that's just the way I feel.
Anyone else? All right, well then we'll revisit it in the public hearing. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So move, Jim?
Mr. Chairman.
There's some mistakes.
Sorry, I think you were going to raise the same, uh, concern that I had.
There's some mistakes in there. So, um, if line eighty-six, it says, um, Jim ZBA, and it should be Jim has to stay on heritage and I go back to ZBA because I can't be on heritage and planning. So, that has to get fixed.
So we're swapping.
I have, please.
No, okay.
Well, it's, it's a land use board regulation.
No, I get it.
I wasn't sure how that exactly ended, but that's how it has to end.
Yep.
I'm not exactly sure how the conversation ended, but that's, that's what needs to happen. Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, say by saying aye.
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 If it was affirmative, minutes are approved. I'll accept a resignation, uh, uh, a, a motion to accept the resignation of Kevin Foley from the Energy Efficiency Task Force. He said he just didn't estimate, um, that it would take more time than he actually had available.
So move, Chairman.
Those in favor, say by saying aye.
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 If it was affirmative. Mr. Foley, thank you for your service. Uh, liaison reports. Do we have anything new for liaison reports? Yes?
So I attended the library, um, this week and, uh, one of the things that, and, uh, you know, the, the new staff there are really working together well and, um, not really a lot of changes. Uh, they, they had the vote to, um, uh, appoint new chair and vice chair and, um, so, uh, some of the same people that have been on for a while, so that's good. It all worked out well. Um, but I did have a concern and, um, wanted to bring this to our new town manager, uh, and let him know that there are some things in there, uh, that could be a, uh, safety risk, um, and what I mean by that is the exterior of the, um, employee entrance. Uh, I'm concerned with the, um, cracking of the pavement there. And I understand that they're looking, uh, to have that repaired, but again, I, I look at it as a different, I understand it's, it's a different form of government there, but I also understand that if anybody was to fall there in that area, that it would be the town that would be on the hook overall, right? So, um, you agree?
I, I, I do, and I, I would note that we, um, we do support the library, uh, not only financially, uh, but also with, with our resources, HR resources and whatnot, so I agree with, with that, Councilor Grant.
But I think that the, uh, the issue is that the patching that we've done in the past, I think is, uh, you know, if, if I could recommend, and I think some of the folks that actually have had, um, experience doing this before, it may need, may need to be replaced, and so it's just something that, uh, maybe some guidance. One of our folks could go over there and help them a little bit, make that decision with, with the education as to what, what's going to happen, because I don't think the patching is going to be, be helpful, and it's already came up once and it caused, it, it could cause a, a, a safety issue, somebody could fall. And so that's really what I'm looking at it again, uh, risk versus reward, you know?
Absolutely, and I'll have somebody make, uh, make a trip and take a look at it.
Thanks so much.
Also you should look at, those were, weren't those done recent, not that long ago, where we put in the.
Ramps. And the, and the ramps, we repaired the ramps.
Yeah, we put in the heat things and.
No, the heat things were to here, I think.
I thought they did them over there too.
I don't think so.
Oh, that's right. Barbara, Barbara fought again. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But I remember the argument, but it wasn't that long ago that you put those things in.
Yeah, the other good news is that they're, uh, putting like we have here, um, the, the push button for handicap people to go in, so those were, those are really, really good improvements that they're working on, so, but, um, yeah, if you could look into that, it'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. New leadership, small opportunity to make, you know, to go to the next level.
Yep.
Good stuff. Okay, anything else, liaisons?
Yes, planning board, we had the big Woodmont thing, which we spoke about a little bit here, um, but, uh, it, 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 they are thinking more, um, housing. They said that they were putting slabs aside or pieces aside for restaurants when that picks up again, and that they were going to hold open spots for that, but they were excited about some of the new stuff that was coming or being built right at this moment. I did ask them about the, um, surveyors that were out on Pillsbury Road and, and they did suggest, they didn't say for sure, um, that it would be housing. Um, so that was there. They said they had somebody, a big insurance company, that was supposed to come, but because of, um, people working from home, building a big corporate office is now not an option. So it's, it's kind of a little, of a roller coaster there, little bits of movement, but really not what I think the residents of this town had anticipated would have happened. I think they thought things were going to move, uh, a lot quicker than they, they were about. They said that they were tax positive, um, all on a, a good note. Uh, so that was about it.
Anyone else, liaisons? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I attended my first Traffic Safety Committee as well as our, uh, new town manager. Um, just as, uh, the voters had spoken, I, um, we discussed, it was on the agenda, we discussed the townwide reduction of speed to thirty miles an hour. Uh, the, the public has spoken to that and also stated that it is not on any of our agendas, um, for that reason. There are a couple of other things that were removed from the Traffic Safety Committee's agenda just for, uh, due to, uh, people that brought forth the concern were not in attendance, so thank you.
Anyone else? And as stated earlier, I did go to the school board meeting, um, did share with you what I said to them. They are still in a superintendent search. Um, it seems to be, uh, they seem to be light on candidates. There was a full presentation. Um, I did ask, um, later subs, uh, later, um, outside of the meeting, if they were going to go out and recruit. And, uh, the answer was, is that the committee was not actively pursuing current superintendents to recruit. They were waiting for people to contact them. That was what they said. I was also contacted by three of the five school board meetings after I spoke to the, uh, school board members, after I spoke to them, and spoke to a fourth in Market Basket, so. They all say they're on board to be number one, so I guess we'll see. Time will tell. Um, that's it for liaisons. Uh, town manager report.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things, uh, I want to highlight here tonight. Uh, the first is I had a nice discussion with Larry Casey from the Arts Council. They are, uh, trying to generate interest right now for, uh, an arts cafe on, uh, Sa- Saturday, April thirtieth, from ten AM until four PM at the Orchard Christian Fellowship. Uh, it, there's, sounds like there's going to be some music, some artwork, some coffee, um, so a nice event, uh, that's going to be put on by them. I wanted to take a minute to, uh, update the council on the thirty-five Gilcrest transaction. Um, this is something that, uh, C- Councilor Paul, you, you had, uh, reached out to me and asked for kind of a lay, lay explanation of that letter that I included here, uh, from the Attorney General's Office. Um, and, uh, I'll do my best to, to, to break that down into, uh, non-lawyer, uh, speak. Uh, I had, uh, throughout the budget process alerted the council and the public to the fact that, um, even, uh, even though I, I didn't think that, uh, the conservation easement was, uh, a, what's called a charitable trust, uh, that we were going to ask the Attorney General's Office, uh, uh, to confirm my legal opinion, uh, before we move forward with that transaction. A charitable trust is, uh, when somebody donates something for a charitable purpose, uh, whether it's a conservation easement or an endowment or something like that, uh, the Attorney General. the Attorney General will consider that a charitable trust so that the, uh, the recipient can't just walk away from it, uh, if they decide that, uh, that's what they want to do. Um, here, the circumstances were such, uh, where this was not a donation, uh, for charitable purposes. It was an arms-length transaction where the town paid money, uh, to, uh, the developer in order, uh, to achieve a desired benefit. And so, uh, the Attorney General agrees with my analysis. It's not a charitable trust and they are asserting no jurisdiction over, uh, that transaction. Doesn't mean, uh, that the Conservation Commission and the Town Council still don't need to determine, uh, that there is a replacement parcel that's of equal or greater conservation value. That's something that the warrant articles, uh, require. Um, it just means that the Attorney General's Office is not going to be part of that review process. So, I wanted to update the council on that. Um, an update on the town's website. Uh, I've heard, uh, from a, a number of residents about a couple of different things. One is that the bottom of the website where we had the news and the updates and the social media, um, we, we just felt we could get more out of that. And so, we've, uh, tweaked that a little bit to try to fit more content there, but have a neater appearance. Um, and so, I would encourage everybody to check that out, uh, and, uh, and, and see what you think. The other, uh, function that I've heard about on the website is the notify me feature. So, the notify me feature allows you to, if you're interested in town council or Conservation Commission, to sign up, uh, to receive those notifications. Um, it would, uh, it, it would make sense to me. It makes sense to, uh, the town staff that, uh, when notifications are sent out, uh, or, or updates are, are placed, that if you've, uh, that, that you should be able to receive those notifications automatically. That's not how the website works, unfortunately. And so, um, we identified what the issue was. Uh, there's a button that needs to be, uh, selected every time, uh, the town, uh, creates an update. That guidance has gone out to the town staff. It's not the most user-friendly, uh, way to do business, but, uh, it, it, it should be notifying, uh, residents who have signed up, uh, to receive those updates, uh, going forward. The town hall parking, uh, situation is a little bit out of control right now? Yes?
Can I just point out on that? Um, so you went to, back to the, uh, uh, website. One of the things that we talked about was also the, uh, town council communication. So, what, uh, I don't know if you guys have been on there lately, but what used to happen was that you were able to go in and hit town council and then you were able to see our names with an extension. And you'd be able to click at our, click underneath the name and get an email, uh, automatically sent to us. Now, it's just one email address, so it can't be individually sent to anybody unless they have their, our email address, but that's where they would get it anyway, so.
That's in process, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, we, we are looking at that and, um, intend to make that change promptly.
Yeah, I just figured we would talk about, with the website, figured it...
It's, it's, it's a good point and that you should be able to email your, your counselor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, are you gonna reach out to the public with this and ask what they'd like to see on there or what they would like to see fixed or how they would hope that it functioned, um, for gathering data for themselves?
We are. I, I don't think we're quite to that point yet, um, but as you and I have discussed, I, I, I think that was your idea. It's on my, my list of, of things that I want, want to do. I think it's a good idea.
And have you taken off all the dead links that go to China?
So, uh, town departments have been, uh, requested, uh, twice to look at their pages and update them. Um, I think that there's, that, that is mostly occurred. I, I don't think it's a hundred percent occurred.
Okay.
And so, um, and so, that's something that I'm gonna be looking to ensure takes place in the coming months. Um, unfortunately, some of these are not easy fixes and they're not, and they're a little bit time-consuming when we have other things to do. But having a website that works and doesn't lead you to China, um, i- is important. And so, so I recognize that.
Yeah, that'd be good. That, that's not a good place to be, 'cause that also opens the door for hackers.
Mm-hmm. Um, I mentioned the town hall parking. Um, there's a little bit of a situation right now with, uh, high school students, uh, parking in, in the parking lot, like, all day. Um, there's another situation where it's, it's being used as a pickup and a turnaround and there's some safety concerns with the library and the, uh, access to the town hall. And so, the, uh, uh, fair warning, the, the police department is going to be out there, uh, and, and, uh, enforcing those restrictions in the coming, uh, weeks. Uh, so I just wanted to update you on that.
Mr. Manager, what are the, what are the, what is the enforcement? What are the penalties?
Uh, I, I can't speak to that directly, um, but what I can tell you is it will be a, an educate, uh, component first. Um, but that education, uh, timeframe is, is gonna be short because it's my understanding that, uh, the kids have been notified repeatedly that there is to be no parking, uh, over here during the day. Um, and so, I, I wouldn't be surprised if a car or two ended up getting towed, uh, because there's certainly that, that, that basis.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, Mike, um, when did this, uh, start happening? Or has it been an ongoing problem?
Seems like it's been worse lately.
For some reason, it's been worse lately.
Parking here, but they do now? Does, nobody knows when it started?
My guess is they all cut through the path and somebody figured out it was closer?
Yeah.
When the weather got nicer, 'cause they, they've always been cutting through the path after the snow went away and somebody probably went, "Hey."
I think there's been a, a gradual trickling over here, quite frankly.
I know people did it at night to go to the, to the Lafferty.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not the issue.
Big cut through.
That's been going for years.
But I never knew during the day, and I mean, I never was aware of it.
The high school kids, right, park over here and then walk across the street. Um, because of course, there's limited parking at the high school and they have been repeatedly warned, according to the school administration, that they are only to be parking either where they have a parking pass or in, in the backlog.
So, that's one issue, is the parking.
Yep.
What about the pickup?
Uh, my belief is the, uh, there, there's gonna be some signage that's posted, uh, that, uh, will dissuade folks from doing that. Uh, because it is interfering. I believe there are handicap, uh, pull-ins there in the front.
I know. I've watched it.
And if you, uh, are here around two fifteen, two o'clock, two fifteen, it is an absolute zoo some days, uh, and it's not a safe situation and somebody's gonna get hurt.
I, I don't know. Why can't we just park a cruiser and put the lights on? No one's gonna park there. I mean, you know, we don't even need manpower to do that.
Yeah, the good news is, uh, you might find the, the chief of police himself out there, uh, leading the...
He's very passionate about this topic.
He's very passionate about this issue. Priority for him.
Then, 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 then let's move on.
Yep. Yep.
I'll be, I'll be curious to see how it plays out.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I, I do have a question relevant.
Well, okay.
Thank you. Um, in regards to the parking over here, is there like an ordinance or a rule or whatever that prohibits students from parking over here? And if not, is that something that we should impose as...
So, I, right now, there's no signage that would alert, uh, a student to the fact that they can't legally park here. They've been emailed, they've been told, but in terms of us being able to actually bring enforcement action, we need signage before we can do that. Um, and once that's in place, the answer is yes.
So, you'll address...
But there is a school policy that they're not supposed to be parking here.
That was more my question.
Yes.
Thank you. So, you'll, the signage will address the pickup, drop-off and extended parking?
Correct.
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 Thank you.
See, the problem is that they're parking in handicap spots and waiting.
Yeah.
That's a violation.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a separate violation.
Right.
Correct. Yep. Yep. And there is a stopping, standing law that, that can be enforced, but in terms of, you know, ki- kids, uh, par- parking there all day.
Put the car, put the blue lights on and the logo someplace else.
Yeah.
Um, two more, two more, uh, things, things of note and they're, and they're kind of happy, uh, happy ones, good ones. Um, on, uh, April, uh, fourth, Landery Police Department, um, together with, uh, with an alert volunteer, were able to safely return, um, uh, one of our senior citizens' home after she, uh, wandered off and, and became, uh, became lost. That's a big win for the, for the police department, for the community and, uh, my thanks to the PD and to Alert for that, uh, that work. Lastly, I want to just draw attention to the fact that, um, I'm happy to report that we received another grant, uh, through the efforts of our planning department, and that is a local source water protection grant. Um, I agree, uh, Counselor Paul, with the concern that, uh, with development, uh, come environmental, um, issues. And, uh, one of those is, uh, water, uh, source water protection. Um, and the town planner advises me that this, uh, grant, it's a modest grant, but it's gonna be used, uh, in connection, uh, with the summer intern to identify, uh, uh, areas that are at risk of contamination to a water source due to septic system malfunction and failure. As part of the project, the intern will be assisting and conducting an inventory of septic systems, reviewing approved septic plans, creating a database and digitizing septic system, uh, plan files so that we have an inventory, uh, and it includes key